My name is Christina Basile, and I am seeking the honor of serving on the Board of Trustees. For over seven years, I have been a proud resident of our vibrant community, actively participating in and contributing to its rich tapestry of life. I've deeply appreciated the numerous amenities and opportunities our village provides, enriching my life in countless ways. My involvement extends beyond simply enjoying these benefits. I am an active member of several clubs and volunteer within the community, including the Pet Club, Westerners, the L V W Chorus, and the Irish American Club. Furthermore, I have had the pleasure of performing with and contributing to the West Village players, showcasing remarkable talent within our community. I am a volunteer manager for Vistone, and I manage the greenhouse, recruiting volunteers and scheduling the greenhouse coverage. These experiences have not only brought me to immense personal fulfillment, but also provided me with a deep understanding of our village's diverse needs and aspirations. My varied experiences in the corporate world and educational system as a teacher provides me with robust skills such as problem solving, strategic planning, conflict resolution, and adaptability. My 20 years as a special education teacher enables me to work with diverse populations and learning styles. This understanding coupled with my dedication to the community engagement has driven my decision to run for the Board of Trustees. I believe my experience and commitment will enable me to contribute meaningfully to the future of our village, ensuring growth and prosperity. I am eager to work collaboratively with fellow trustees and residents to address the challenges and opportunities that lie ahead, and would be honored to have your support. I welcome the chance to discuss my vision for our village in more detail and answer any questions you might have. You may reach me via email christina.basile@yahoo.com or cell (908) 705-0822. I believe I can make a difference, and I thank you for the opportunity to serve in our great community. Please consider voting for me.
Hello, my name is Samuel Corolo, and I'm running for a position on the Leisure Village West Board of Trustees. I bring over 40 years' experience in education. Having served as a high school principal and lifelong educator throughout my career, I was committed to building strong, respectful communities, listening to concerns, and making thoughtful, balanced decisions. These are the same values I would bring to the Board: openness, accountability, and service to others. Since retiring, I've made Leisure Village West my home, and I'm proud to be an active and involved resident. I serve as a Vistone driver here in the village, helping neighbors to get to appointment and run errands. I volunteer at Central State Hospital in the outpatient transport department, providing support to patients and staff. I'm also an enthusiastic member of the Ping Pong Club, Bachi Club, and the Irish American Club. These roles have helped me stay connected to the community and listen closely to what matters to our residents. That is why I was deeply disappointed when the Board of Trustees voted to pass the foundation without meaningful input from the residents and against the clear wishes of many in the community. The decision lacked transparency and ignored the voices of the very people the Board is supposed to represent. If elected, I will work hard to restore trust and bring your concerns to the table. I will listen carefully and communicate honestly and ensure every resident feels heard before major decisions are made. I'm not running to push an agenda, I'm running to be your voice. Thank you for the opportunity to earn your vote. I'm ready to serve, and I will always put the interests of the community first.
Hi, I'm Al Damodle, and yes, I'm running for the Board again. Even after the Board blindsided me and voted to remove me as a trustee at the June 4th, 2025, Board closed in open meetings, and then even talked about me without being my being present at the July 2nd, 2025 Board meeting, providing information about me but not giving me a chance to be heard. As many of you know, but others do not, before you judge me and make a decision as to whether or not you will vote for me or instead conclude that I'm guilty as charged, I would ask that, before you jump to conclusions, remember: Things are not always what they appear to be. The Board claims that stating on or about May 27th not only have three violations of the governing documents, but even more than that, which were not formally addressed previously, not true. There were none. The Board claims I was previously reprimanded, not true. The Board found they needed to act swiftly, not true. In fact, there was one personal matter and one event that they intentionally split up into others without giving me enough opportunity to be heard or due process, and instead immediately removed me less than a week later. On June 4th, I was shocked, as was the community, to hear I was being removed. Some facts I can touch upon openly. The week before the Board meetings, I witnessed an HOA employee of ours in the act of doing something that was dangerous to the community, unlawful, and required immediate attention. The person was pulling up the Xfinity Utility Markout Flags in an area that was to be mowed. I've worked for Verizon, and I would call these markouts in. I know what the law stipulates about this. One must leave these markout flags in place until the work is commenced in that area. I brought this situation to the employees' attention, told them to stop, and then immediately went to the office to inform the community manager of what was happening. I thought I was doing something to protect the community and its best interest. Surprisingly, those flags are still in place across the street, and none of them have been run over by turf masters when they're mowing our lawns. They're still in place, a month later. But I guess I was wrong, because that employee complained to another, who then got another involved, including someone from the office who wasn't involved at all, some of whom are apparently related to each other, and they wrote up almost identical statements against me, but no formal complaint. So instead of them being reprimanded, I was removed without due process of law or even given an opportunity to be heard and defend myself before the community. One prior situation comes from a resident, in fact, someone I consider a friend, with whom I engaged with a Facebook private message. Apparently, my dry sense of humor in our exchange should have never, in my opinion, have given rise to any issues between us. But simply because the HOA does not deal with social media exchanges, why that situation was used was nothing more than an effect to reach three occurrences. The Board, to also have me removed, chose not only to combine situations, but even claimed that I was also asking for favors. The so-called favor was my asking a maintenance department individual had anything could be bend a small piece of metal on my behalf. I'm sure many of our residents have asked questions as to what work maintenance can or cannot do for us. I didn't know if they could do that for a resident or not. I will point out that my request was not fulfilled. Therefore, I feel it's a mute issue. Anyway, I never expected anything for free, and my request had nothing to do with my being a Board member, but instead a homeowner, just like everyone else. I had been told there was a charge for bending the metal. I would have paid without questions. I have also not disclosed any confidential information to anyone, which is basically our confidentiality agreements that trustees sign regard confidentiality. It doesn't regard communications or conversations one may have. I have also not provided a waiver of my attorney-client privileges or relationship. For Mr. Gilbert at the July 2nd meeting to have even suggested that I did without once again giving me an opportunity to be heard was completely improper. I'm not only running for the Board, but otherwise going to pursue my rights to A D R, which I'm still waiting for, and anything else there is for me, in effect, to vindicate myself from the inflammatory and unfounded allegations that have been brought against me. As many of you know, I do believe I have done good for this community. I have put at all times my own interest to the side and instead look out for the best interest of L V W. Many of you know that I have learnt most of our A V operations and have rendered my services when requested various clubs, even though the Board has suggested that each club have their own members to do so. I've been involved in various organizations, amenities that we have, and I continue to have my best interest for the community and not personal gains. I thank you all for your time and listening to me, and I seek your support in obtaining a position on our Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Hi, I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Ronnie Reese, and I'm running for the Board of Trustees. What I first want to address is the big elephant in the room as to why I pulled out from the election last year. One of the issues was medical. I was facing a knee replacement and didn't think I could make it to the meetings as required. So that was one reason I pulled out. There was also some irregularities that I will not go into detail about, but between the double-edged sword, I decided to withdraw and wait another year in the village to learn more about the village, more about its operating procedures, and what can be done. I am not here so much to tell you about me as I want to learn about you. I want to learn about you, your needs, your wants, and how you feel the Board is representing what people of the community, excuse me, of the community want. I'm driving on units. This is where my main concern is: units before amenities. There has been a fortune spent on amenities while the units are left to rot. This is a divided community. I was verified this by someone that used to work in management, and one area is actually called the ghetto, which is totally and completely unacceptable. I have been at not too many meetings. I made my first Board meeting the other day, and the ruckus from the audience was founded. I am striving for more honesty, more clarity, and more openness from the Board. It appears the will of the residents is not being followed, even though the Board says they are there for fiscal responsibility. Fiscal responsibility goes beyond what's the cheapest. Fiscal responsibility is also considering what the unit owners want and don't want, and the Board should be open about that. I want to know from the Board who suggested what, who voted yes and who voted no behind the curtain, and then in front of us, they all vote yes. That is totally unacceptable. When something is suggested, such as the dog park, the kitchen, the this, the that, approve that, approve that, a foundation now we're starting to form, something is very, very kept secret. We, the unit owners, we pay for this, and we have every right to know exactly where our money is going. We never get a total fee. We had a quarter of a million-dollar fiasco with the outdoor kitchen and the building over it, and it's still not done correctly. And the ka-ching, ka-ching, ka-ching continues. As a Board member, if we do any major projects, all estimates are to come in, and a complete job estimate before it's finished. Not this piecemeal, well, we approved the electrician, we approved the plumber, we approved the roofer, we approved the cement work, all under different approvals. To me, that is unacceptable. If we do any kind of major renovation or major reconstruction, we have to know the total cost before we start. I understand there may be some unforeseen expenses, but the partial-out projects is unacceptable. And as a member of the Board, if I'm honored to get your vote, I will vote against any job that is being done that is piecemealed. Anything that does not have a total in-contract cost, I will vote against. I'm looking to see, when they talk about all these different categories and this bank account and that bank account, and this could only be used for this, and this could only be used for that because that's the way it was written up, unacceptable. I remember the meeting, they said, well, they would have to get a lawyer and change this document and that document. We paid this lawyer so many fees every time he walks into this village. We could pay a lawyer to transfer monies from one account to another to get the units up to date. Also, in our grounds. Why is it that around clubhouse and the entrances, we do our own maintenance, and they look beautiful? But the units look like crap, for lack of a better word, which I do have a better word, but I won't say on video. Let's call it number two. Deciding on the whole area is over 50 years old, and then just now starting a fund to replace it, that's a concern. Your electrical boxes are supposed to be replaced. Call up and try to find out where you stand, the replacement of the electrical box, and you get an answer. I know they've done away with the list as far as I was told. I'm not sure if that's just a rumor, because the list is ridiculous. I want to know, our maintenance men, do any of them have electrical licenses or plumbing licenses? Or do we have a bunch of unlicensed handyman running around? If, let's say, your unit catches on fire from a light that you had paid to have installed by a handyman who is not licensed, and you, God forbid, have a fire, and they determine the fire was caused by improper wiring of a light, and your insurance company, well, who installed it? I don't know. The handyman. And there you are, your insurance is not going to cover you. There are too many things to be done in the units to proceed with doing any more improvements, none. Ballpark, dog park, any park. Stop. Stop already with this. There was rumored about an adult playground. You want an adult playground, go drive to one or use your bedroom if you have a spouse for your playground. And I say that as I chuckle. But I'm here to represent you. I'm not a yes man. I never was and never will be. Present to me your needs, present to me your wants, I will bring them to the Board. I will be your voice to a Board that seems to not be hearing us lately. I want to be your voice. I want to represent you, you, you. I don't care which side of the village you're on, if you're on the ghetto side or the other side. This is a divided village when it comes to services. I mean, the gutters are a mess, the siding is a mess, the streets are a mess, the grass is a mess. What are we paying for? And then they tell us they can't get to keep help. Well, if you can't keep help and you have less help, why are our maintenance fees going up? We're paying more and getting less. I don't have privy to any private information, so I can't answer any of your questions now. But believe me, as a Board member, I will be assertive for you and nobody else. I account to no one. I didn't form any leagues with anyone on the Board. I have my own mind, and I know what I see, and I don't like it. And it is time for change. And I would appreciate your vote to bring that change as soon as possible. I'm going to keep this short, because unlike the Board meetings, I will not go on for four hours. I will not yell at people. I will not gavel people. How we are being treated at meetings and how we are being treated with services is, as I said, unacceptable. I'm there for you. Thank you, and I appreciate your listening, and I hope I have your voice. Thank you.
Good afternoon, neighbors. My name is Gene Ritchie. I'm a candidate for the L V W Board of Trustees. Thank you to the Election Committee for scheduling this opportunity that produces the videos of the five candidates. My wife, Gail, and I moved to L V W in the summer of 2017. We retired on the same day, June 30th, 2019. And I can tell you now, I'm not a candidate for CBS Evening News or NBC Evening News à la Walter Cronkite or any other news media. I hold two college degrees, a B S in Ed, I was a poli sci major. I have an M S in guidance and counseling. And yes, my journey through academia is a bit different from those two degrees. I was a dorm counselor at Eastern Illinois University. The entire Division II National Champion football team lived in my building, so there's not much I'm afraid of. At Ramapo College, I was the Assistant Director of the Residents Life Program for a number of years. This is all outlined on my bio, from 1980 to 1985, until I left to work at Columbia University in their Residents Hall operations. I received a call from Ramapo that year to please return to Ramapo and help run the Student Center due to a maternity leave of one of my colleagues. After that tour of duty expired, a vice president promoted me to Associate Director of Facilities, and I remained there for 30 years. It was a union environment. I worked both with C W A and I F T. It was a department at facilities of 100 employees, plumbers, electricians, H V A C, housekeepers, office staff, and others who made sure the 330-acre property that's Ramapo College was well-maintained for faculty, staff, students, and guests. If you're interested, you can look up the history on the web. It used to be an estate. And thankfully, Trenton bought the property and created Ramapo College of New Jersey. I'll continue to look at some of my notes so I don't forget anything. Although, as I said to Mary a few moments ago, I know I'll forget something that I'll think of when I go to bed. My time at Columbia, those of you who are familiar with Columbia know they own a lot of property. But when I was called back to Ramapo, I just could not say no. As Associate Director of Facilities at Ramapo, I was second in command of that department. I supervised and evaluated employees. I recruited, hired, trained, and disciplined those employees. I wrote bid specifications. I revised existing versions of those specifications. I ordered supplies and equipment. I directly managed a multitude of service contracts for that work best left to outside professionals. I managed the bid process with the Director of Purchasing for large-scale service contracts. I directed many small and large projects. And as I said earlier, Facilities was a union shop. I made regular inspections of the grounds and buildings of the campus. I worked with architects, public safety, construction managers, the fire marshal, engineers, landscape architects, vice presidents, deans, professors, colleagues. One of my biggest customers was the Residents Life Director Athletics. I worked with the President's Office for his special events, and I worked closely with H R. While I worked regular office hours, I wasn't always at my desk. I carried a walkie-talkie. I was expected to complete assignments given me by the Director not necessarily outlined in my job description. I was happy to do that. I possessed a proprietary interest in Ramapo. Most importantly, I had an interest on the campus was well-maintained for faculty, staff, students, and guests. There was a study made some years ago that said after academic-related questions are asked and answered from parents and students, the next concern was how the campus looked, and that was important to us. I was also an N L employee. N L meant no limit. If I sat down at supper at my house and the phone rang, I might well have to return to campus to handle it. That's what I bought into, and I was okay with that. Many times, those calls were at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, might be a fire or a flood, and I was the one who had to respond and set into motion a facilities-related response. I was also contractual. I was not union, although in my life, I've been a member of three unions. I had to go through a rigorous reappointment process every two years, and I survived all those. So if you divide two to three years into 30, you can imagine how many reappointment processes I experienced. I believe if anyone were to inquire about my work ethic at Ramapo, I believe they would say, excuse me, they would say Gene was good to work with. He was friendly and knowledgeable. He got the job done. Most importantly, I practice organizational citizenship. This was outlined in everyone's evaluation instrument. It basically means you worked with a variety of people in a civil and collaborative manner as a representative of a large service-oriented department. It matters not your degrees, but if you can't speak with people in a civil tone, all those degrees are for naught. Gail and I lived in Ridge Gardens from 1989 to 2019. I spent many years on our condo board from the beginning, when the developer still controlled the Board, to fashioning a realistic budget for both the regular homeowners as well as the five Mount Laurel buildings we had. We had two different budgets. Some of the accomplishments in those years, we replaced roofs and roads, and I established an onsite property management office so homeowners could discuss various issues in that office. I served 10 years as President. A lot of what I've just spoken to, those of you who come to the meet and greet or to the forum that's scheduled, I'll be glad to give you more details. I just did not want to spend the remaining time of this recording going over some details that could be spoken about in one-on-one. I'm the last one taped today, and I recognize the work that's being done by the tech behind the screen. If I'm elected, I plan to become acquainted with the members of the Board, the main office staff, the community manager to review and discuss maintenance-related issues. I also would like to meet all maintenance employees, getting to know them by name. The reason for this goes back to when I was a Residents Hall Director. I told my RAs, make sure within the first few days... I told my RAs, make sure within the first few days of the semester, you get to know your residents by name. That made all the difference. I'll not be a Monday morning quarterback in terms of commenting on scenarios on hand and that I may well not have all the answers. My watchwords remain civility and experience. Again, we all must speak to each other in a civil tone. I believe that I have the qualifications to serve the needs of our community. I look forward to meeting with you at the two scheduled meet and greet events and the candidate forum. This is my wheelhouse. I appreciate your considering my candidacy and your vote. Lastly, every day, whether I was a Residents Hall Counselor or Associate Director, I put a quote on my office bulletin board for people to read. The best one was Abe Lincoln's quote, "Folks are about as happy as they make up their minds to be." Thank you for your time.